Good morning, everybody. Nice to see you all over here, people. First thing on the agenda today is approval of the agenda. Second. We got a motion and a second to approve the agenda. I do want to mention that there's a donation from Johnson's Auto Repair. So did that. I want to recognize them for their donation to the K-9 program for their candy sales. They made a donation from that. Thank you for them. All in favor of the agenda?
Aye.
Okay. That will go on to my favorite part of the year and stuff, or month, employee recognition. First one we got is Brian Axman from Public Health. Got 20 years of service to the Clay County. Thank you, Brian, for all your years. Shall I give you a few words of acknowledgement?
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner, Commissioners. Brian has been a wonderful employee. He's what I call a plug-and-play. He put him on the calendar, and he's there every day, shows up, does his job, does it well. I don't have to worry about the overnights when he's on there. He has the experience and is just a very dedicated employee. So I really want to thank Brian for all his hard work and being there for me and detox. So, thank you, Brian.
Thank you. Thank you, Ryan. Is Ross here? Okay. Ross Olson has 25 years in. Let Cory tell us a little bit about Ross.
Ross is one of those employees that every December, we have to push him to get rid of his vacation. So when he called me and said, "I'm on vacation next week," I didn't make him come in to get this. So I'll accept this on behalf of Ross. I really appreciate the work he does out there.
Okay, thank you to Ross. Now we'll move on to 30 years, Kristi Sixt. That's why Kathy's here. I was wondering, I thought you were going to be recognized. It seemed like another five years for you. Kristi has 30 years in with Public Health.
I could make this really long because I have lots to say about Kristi, but 30 years, Kristi, wow. So she started out as a transcriber. The nurses were dictating their notes, and so she was transcribing. So that was a lot of years ago, and no, they're not going to go back to that, just so you know. And then she got a little disruptive, so we moved her to the clinic, and she did that for a few years. Excuse the disruptive she was. And then, from there, she became a case aide, and she continues to be a case aide where everybody can keep track of her, and so it's good. Thanks, Kristi. She puts up with a lot of grief from me. I give her a lot of grief, and there's lots of stories about that. But appreciate all you do. You're awesome, and you've been here a long time, and you're going to be here another 20 years, so good job.
And from that, we'll move on to 35 years for Kathleen Notti with the Auditor's Office. I think I've known Kathleen. Weren't you working at Kmart before you came here?
Yes, dear.
Many years. Okay. Yeah, for 35 years.
You see me everywhere.
Yeah. Lori, you want to say a few words? Oh, excuse me. You get this one, thank you.
So Kathy's been with Clay County for almost as long as I have been, but she's, I'm pretty sure she promised me that she would be here at least until I retire, so you got a few years left, just so you know. But Kathy goes above and beyond for clients, as well as our coworkers in social services, and so Clay County is extremely lucky to have Kathy as an employee. Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Anybody on the computer?
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay. All right. We'll go into the approval of the bills and vouchers.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the payment of bills and vouchers.
We've got a motion and a second to approve the bills and vouchers. All in favor?
Aye.
We've got minutes from August 15th and 22nd. Need to be approved?
Move for approval of the minutes for August 15th and 22nd.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to approve the minutes from August 15th and 22nd. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We've got a presentation for a request for a letter of support for the City of Morehead federal grant opportunity.
I'm here today to request a letter of support. Your support is very valuable. We're seeking, the City of Morehead is seeking a federal grant for a climate-resilient stormwater mitigation project, and this project is in the near-south neighborhoods of Morehead. And you can see from the photos of flooded streets and things, as rainfall events are more frequent and heavier in duration, we have significant issues with street flooding that affect transportation and a number of other things in the community. And we worked last year, the City of Morehead worked with the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency and did a study of this area, and have come up with a plan that would reduce flooding in a significant portion of Morehead, a 42% reduction in acres flooded, 58% reduction in structures impacted, and 24% of intersections with major flooding impacts, a reduction. Sanitary manholes impacted, down by 10%, and public spaces inundated by 2.6%. So there are funds available through a program called the Protect Grant through the U.S. Department of Transportation, and because of this study with MPCA, we're in a good position to apply for this funding. We're seeking $12.34 million for this project, and we'll match it with redoing streets and our engineering costs. So we just, hot off the press, have a two-page project briefing. The full grant application, I believe, was provided in advance, but this briefing is probably a more condensed version of what is going to happen, so.
Okay.
What questions might you have, if any?
First of all, I want to apologize. Didn't introduce you as Lisa Boyd from the City of Morehead.
That's right.
So thank you for your presentation. Any questions for Lisa? Okay.
I have this one. Yeah, sounds like a great opportunity. I am curious, looking at the front page here, I haven't heard of a gate well. What is that?
Well, if our city engineer was here, he could tell you what a gate well is. So I apologize, I don't have that technical answer for you, Paul.
All right.
I assume Bob Zimmerman's good with all of this?
He is, and he would be here if he didn't have another commitment this morning.
Well, if it's good enough for Bob, I would like to make a motion that we send a letter of support on behalf of the City of Morehead for this federal grant.
I'll second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much for your partnership.
Well, thank you. It looks like a good project. Now we have a bunch of presentation by Shannon Foal, and it looks like you brought along, did you bring anybody along, Kathy?
Yes, we brought the crew. We brought everyone, so.
Firepower here.
You're right, right. All right, I think we'll load the presentation, right? Is it up? Okay, perfect. Thanks. All right, good morning, Chair Gross and the members of the Clay County Commission. Thank you for the opportunity to be with you here today. My name is Shannon Foal, President of the Chamber. I have with me on my right Jenna Miller, the Executive Director of our foundation, and to my left Catherine Greenberg, our Executive Vice President, who also leads all of our public policy work. So we're here once again for you today to talk a little bit about the investment that you made with us last year and the plans that we have going forward into the next year for a contract for service with Clay County. So we'll go through a few of our workforce backgrounds, our Ignite Initiative around workforce, public policy pieces, and then obviously have time for any questions that you may have for us. So just as a reminder, our mission for the Chamber is to be a catalyst for growth and prosperity for this entire region. So that entire region includes all of Clay County and all of Cass County. We have about 1,750 businesses and organizations that are members of the Chamber right now, of which just over 400 of those come from Clay County, from the Minnesota side. We are really driven to promote and protect business, inspire individuals, cultivate communities, and influence action. We'll demonstrate that today through the work that we're doing. We do this in five major cornerstones, the things that we focus on, business vitality. First and foremost, that really covers the small business sector, helping our small businesses grow and prosper, allowing them for second-stage growth so that we can continue to drive economic positive impact into our region. Of those 1,750-plus members, 71% of those have 15 employees or less. So this is really, truly reflective of our small businesses. They also reflect a very diverse background, a very diverse industry sector that makes up the Chamber. So we are doing very creative and innovative programming to continue to focus on their needs. As we move into public policy and advocacy, Catherine's going to cover that in great detail today, along with the workforce and talent component that Jenna and myself will look at. Our community enhancement part of this also aligns well with the priorities of the county in that we're looking at, what do we need to do to help make sure that our community is prepared for sustainability and for growth? We do that through, obviously, great partnerships with the city and Downtown Morehead, Inc. We've got great partnerships with the Morehead Business Association. Those types of things allow us to take a bigger viewpoint on community enhancement and what we need to do in that regard. And then the final cornerstone that we have is organizational excellence. We strive to be one of the most high-performing organizations in the region, so we do a lot of self-assessment and investment to make sure that we have continual improvement on a consistent basis with the Chamber. So as we talk about setting the stage for you for workforce, this is not a shocker to any of you. Many of you have been very involved with us throughout our workforce initiatives. We know that the workforce challenges continue to exist, hindering our ability, probably the number-one area for hindering our growth in this region, and really, the economic impact of this region is the ability to attract, retain, and develop high-quality workforce. So we have specific initiatives that we have put in place. When I joined the organization almost three years ago, we stood up our Chamber Foundation and really started to become much more aggressive as far as how do we address, as a region, the major challenges around workforce, things like a very low unemployment rate, a skills gap where we're not matching our education to the workers that we have here, the retention side of things, making sure that we're retaining students, but also workforce. And by the way, I'm going through some of these very quickly, so you'll have the complete PowerPoint presentation for your looking at afterwards. We also know that businesses are telling us that their employees are also struggling with the connection between education and training. It's a pretty significant challenge to even navigate some of the training options that are out there, so how do we make that more systems-designed and much easier to understand? As you know, we have an aging workforce, so less people in the workforce, which means we then need to attract more from outside the community, so increased labor costs and then inflation and wage pressures all add into what we have as a major challenge, not unique to many other communities across the country. I just returned from a national convention with 65 of my Chamber colleagues from all across the country, and we spent two entire days talking about what are other regions doing that are very, very innovative and dynamic? What are we doing here? Things like our Good Jobs Challenge, how is that positioning us for strength in the future? And really, this region, I'm really proud to say, has become a beacon of best practice around the country, both in our public policy work, but specifically in our workforce initiatives. So as I now, I'll turn it over to Jenna to talk about a couple of those programs in a lot more detail.
Thanks, Shannon. Today, I'm going to talk a little bit about our Ignite Initiative, which is our systematic approach to workforce, anywhere from acclimation, development, retention, and then integration, those four key areas that we focus on. And before we really jump into it, I want to give an update on our Good Jobs Challenge, since this is for the community. So last year, we were awarded $9.62 million, and I say "we" were awarded, our region was awarded. We were simply the stewards of this funding, and this funding goes to develop adult job-seekers and adult learners across populations of veterans, new Americans, immigrants, refugees, our BIPOC population, justice-involved, and women in technology, and then we built in high school students as a sustainable, you know, option there so that we can continue the training and development. And that funding goes for curriculum needs and also to add wraparound service care for individuals as they're going through education and upskilling, and then they're directly connected to an employer within the region. So an individual can go and earn a certificate or a credential over at M-State and then be paired directly with an employer, so it reduces that risk of upskilling, and then that salary has to meet the requirements for what is deemed a good job with a particular living family sustainable wage, and then also professional growth opportunities. And so that funding really goes into the direction of wraparound services and childcare, transportation, and English language learning, three of the areas that we know are challenges to upskill our workforce within the region. And so at the end of our three-year period, we will, can say that we will have placed at least 900 individuals through upskilling programs within the region and directly within Good Jobs. Right now, we're at the end of Phase 1. We're heading Phase 2, and so that means our educational partners are going to begin to grow, and our business partners are going to begin to grow with that, and then we'll start piloting participants through that program, which is really exciting. We have about seven that are currently in the program, and we can work out any sort of kinks that happen with that before we launch into full implementation.
A piece that I might add to that is, as all of you are great stewards of the county and have a lot of different networks that you engage with, this will be a great thing for us in the future to make sure we have information out there for you. Over half of the overall grant, as Jenna mentioned, is wraparound service dollars, so we have up to $5,000 per individual to help them with childcare, transportation, tuition, English as a second language. So we know that many residents here in Clay County would like that ability to have some additional training and credentials to put them into better jobs, so we have the ability and the resources to leverage those in their best interest. So we'll just need to make sure that we continue this, as we continue this partnership, we get all the information out to the residents of Clay County so that they can take access if they fit in one of those areas, and then within the areas of advanced manufacturing, precision agriculture, or cyber IT. Those are the three focus areas for this grant.
When we look at the foundation of Good Jobs Challenge and then our overall Ignite Initiative, we really look at stakeholder involvement. And so one of our workforce platforms, our Ignite FMWF, we've worked closely with educators within the region to address, to make sure that the platform is appropriate for that user experience for teachers and students. We've been leading several nonprofit roundtables, convening 50 different leaders coming together so that we can have collective impact and action towards large funding opportunities at the federal level like Good Jobs Challenge, so that we're moving towards a collective impact, and those nonprofit roundtables serve the populations that are included within Good Jobs Challenge, and then leading sector partnerships so that we can make sure that the training opportunities that are available within the region match the needs of industry leaders. So we're starting up sector partnerships within agriculture, ag tech, cybersecurity, and then manufacturing, launching on October, November of this year, so that's really exciting. I'm going to skip through some of the Ignite FMWF data. We're in the high schools, all high schools have opportunity, and middle schoolers have opportunity to our workforce platform, but one of the things that we're really excited about is the organic adult learner growth. We've been working with Minnesota Rural CEP with Ignite so that we have some of our courses and curriculum available to adult learners as they put together resumes and work with career counselors on CEP. We've seen growth in just over, I think it's 39.4% growth in adult users on that platform. We've had just nearly over 120 local videos shot within the region that are being posted onto the platform. One of those is the Morehead School District Bus Depot. We knew that they were having difficulties in hiring bus drivers, so we went out, shot what a career is like, so that students and adult learners are able to hear what a career is like working for transportation, and then Morehead has access to all those videos for free so that they can use them in their hiring and recruitment. One of our exciting opportunities that we've done is adventures, in which we provide an opportunity for teachers through K through 20 to earn professional development credit by exploring different government, nonprofit, and business opportunities within the region. This year, our educators came out to Clay County, and they loved it. We've had, we had such great feedback, so thank you so much for hosting them. We might tap on y'all again next year as we do adventures again, and we continue to grow the program. But then they're able to go back into the classroom and connect with students directly with what careers look like and the skills needed in the region to be retained within the region. This past year, we ran an Upskillathon to where we awarded credentials with certificates. We were the most high-performing Upskillathon in the entire nation with nearly 500 credentials awarded to individuals from ages 16 and above with prize money, supported by Microsoft and Community Skills Initiative. And then, one of the things that we were really excited about is we launched our Community Concierge Program, so we hired a concierge strategist, and this focuses on acclimation and retention. So when our new talent moves into the region, they are directly connected with individuals and organizations so that we can retain those individuals. And one of those really exciting areas, if I could ask you to skip ahead two slides, is within our diversity, equity, and inclusion and integration. So we also hired a DEI coordinator, who just started last month with us, to have quarterly DEI trainings, develop a DEI council so that we can collectively move together as a region in DEI, and then also make sure that when we're talking about integration and acclimation within the community, that it's an equitable experience, and so that the experiences of connecting directly in the community are available for all populations that are within the region, and they have access to programs or access to opportunities that can help them make this region fully known as their home.
I think I'll add one thing on our concierge work. One of the things that's important for us is that we've got great representation, awareness, and understanding of the assets of Clay County, meaning what do we have to offer on the Minnesota side? We hear a lot about what's on the North Dakota side. This, our work focuses on the entire region. So when we bring in senior level, let's say we, there's a recruited senior-level exec coming into town, we make sure that that tour is inclusive of all of the different assets, areas of the region over here in the Minnesota side as well. We also do the same thing for businesses. When we have business leaders that are looking at expanding their business here, they have a great understanding of what are the opportunities, both financially for the businesses, but also from a programmatic and workforce standpoint, what are the assets here in the Minnesota aspect as well. We know that it is very important for this region to continue to see growth and prosperity, that we have growth on both sides of the river, in both states, for numerous different reasons. Now, we'll turn it over to Catherine. She'll talk a little bit of public policy work for you.
It's my favorite part of the presentation now, public policy and advocacy. We'll only take about five more minutes of your time here before getting to questions. But first, before I jump in, I just want to say thank you so much for your continued support and engagement on our public policy and advocacy work. And I mean not only the resources that you put in last year, though, that's very helpful, along with coming and showing up to the Day at the Capitol, signing on to letters, helping us with access to businesses, all these different pieces that you do as a county really help us as a region to move forward on public policy and advocacy. So I'll start with some background and insights that I wanted to just put up there, things that you're all probably very aware of, but wanted to call out specifically. Right now, we have a really interesting time with Minnesota politics where it's this trifecta. So this last election cycle is when the Democratic Party gained control of both the Senate and House and the governorship. Why this is important and why I bring this up is there's not much of a check and balance of needed compromise to get things done, so we're seeing things move a lot faster as we saw during this last legislative session. And regardless of which party would be in power with this trifecta, it's important to have that compromise needed and be able to bring citizens' voices to the Capitol, whether it be business leaders, community leaders, or what have you. Additionally, there's this dichotomy of this metro in greater Minnesota. I put a map on there showing the different legislative districts, and as you can see, the dark green is all the lines that are in the metro area. So we continue to have this difference in what is needed in the metro areas and what is needed in greater Minnesota, both vitally important to the citizens of Minnesota, but we just want to make sure that we're not getting lost in greater Minnesota as the needs are different. And so that moves to the next one, that we are actually, Clay County is the fastest-growing county outside of the Minneapolis-St. Paul area, which is really exciting for this area and a true testament to the work that you all are doing, along with our cities and other organizations. So really exciting stuff, that 13.9% growth increase since 2010, and looking forward to continue that growth as we move forward. And lastly, just the opportunity to leverage greater Minnesota. As I said, there's really a huge opportunity right now that we can be leaders as the fastest-growing county in bringing together greater Minnesota to really shine a light on those needs that are maybe different than the metro, but bring all of our facets of greater Minnesota together. I want to talk a little bit about Morehead Area Day at the Capitol. I see my formatting got a little bit messed up on this one, but this would be our third annual day in St. Paul to educate and influence, and this one has really grown faster than we expected, which is really exciting. We've had over 20 individuals with us last time and look forward to growing that this year. What's really great about this trip is we're able to come all in lockstep, the cities, the county, the business community, all together to the Capitol to say, "Here are some of our priorities as a community." And not every community does that, as you know, so that's really powerful and demonstrates the leadership in this community from both the private and public sector, as well as brings more validity to the issues that we're talking about. So one of the other things that we added this year that is, went over really well and we look to continue in this next year, is getting valuable insight from the business and community leaders that we serve. And so collectively, you'll see on there a couple examples, but collectively, we put together a roundtable with your very own commissioner, as well as the Morehead Mayor, to be able to sit down with Shannon and business leaders and talk about the needs of the community, what we're seeing, what are the biggest challenges, what should we look at during the legislature as priorities. Really great conversation came out of that April roundtable. Additionally, we did a roundtable with Senator Kupchak regarding Senate File 2, that paid family and medical leave. That was, of course, a big issue during legislative session. That went over really well. We had over 52 business leaders in attendance there, being able to share their thoughts directly with the senator. It was a great conversation, more business leaders than we've seen show up for any of the other priorities that we've had, so that was really great engagement that we look to continue. So we look to continue these business roundtables, whether they're on specific issues or just continuing some of those general ones with you alongside the business community and cities, to be able to hear directly from our business leaders and citizens. Another thing that we started up that has been successful, we just had our first Clay County one, is community leader forums. We're finding that, like I said, it's really important when we all go lockstep to the Capitol, but we need to continue to be lockstep in all the different issues that we tackle as a community. So we started these up, this is just a community forum of leaders within Clay County area coming together, having conversations. coming together, having conversations. Invites, like you see, include partners such as the county leadership, educational institutions, community-focused organizations like ourself, all coming together to discuss the big topic issues, which is, of course, where we'll be able to talk about some of the legislative issues, but beyond, what are we seeing in the community and how do we need to address it collectively? All right, this is one of the fun slides to talk real quick about the last legislative assembly, this 92nd one, talking about a few of the key projects that we were able to see go through. Though, like I said, there was one party in control, so there, there was a lot that got done on some specific issues. We were really proud that we were able to get a few things past the finish line. And of course, don't want to take all the credit as the chamber, this was a huge part due to the leadership of the county, the cities, businesses, and other partners. Top of the list, Dilworth Fire Station. This was an incredible win for our community. And I know the, the Dilworth Mayor and, and fire chief speak very highly of the work that we collaboratively did with them, going out, shooting a video of the space, taking that, those talking points and messaging points to the legislature all across the state. It was a really collaborative effort, and we were able to see that Dilworth Fire Station get funded. So that was a really important thing this session that we were really passionate about. In addition, Weld Hall, being able to be at the top of the list for multiple sessions. We were excited to see that get some funding. Morehead Flood Protection, of course, something that is very important to this region. Still had a little work to do on it, but being that that got funded was great. And then the rail grade separation project was another one that we were really proud that got some funding. So I also wanted to put on the bottom here just a little note about the paid family leave discussions. Though there wasn't a success in that it, that it wasn't passed or had significant adjustments to it, we see it as a success that Clay County was one of the biggest area leaders in this conversation. And I don't mean just opposing it, but truly being at the table as a partner, saying, this is what our business leaders are saying, this is what our employees are saying, how can we find compromise and make this the best solution for everyone? So we were commended a lot on that. The letter that we used that some of you may have signed on to in the room was circulated across the state. Other chambers and communities used it. So really demonstrated our area's leadership on a key issue that is impacting all Minnesotans, which is really exciting. Then my last slide here is just looking at upcoming priorities. I wanted to make a note at the top that, of course, this is not exhaustive. This is only three top issues that we're looking at. But we look forward to working with all of you, as well as business leaders and our city leaders, to identify what are the next things on our list. We're already starting those conversations, so we look forward to that for this upcoming legislative session. A few that we know will be on there, that paid family leave, looking to just see, can we have any adjustments? What is the impact going to be now that we've had a little more time to look at what it will be? Additionally, the flood protection, like I said, really had great strides, but a little bit left to do. And I know a lot of you around this table know a lot about the flood protection piece. And then finally, Career Workforce Academy, that was something we worked on last session. But just like the Dilworth Fire Sessions, sometime, or the Dilworth Fire Station, sometimes things take multiple sessions. So we'll be back again for the Career Academy, trying to get some funding to build that out fully and get some adult learners more in there. So those are a few of the things, but we look forward to adding a more robust legislative agenda as we move forward.
So on behalf of the chamber, we thank you for the time. Really thank you for your leadership. We are at a very exciting crossroads for our region. We've got a huge opportunity ahead of us, but that's going to take significant partnership, both public and private sector partnership. It's the kind of partnership where we look for not just a financial investment, but truly an investment of human capital to bring your expertise to the table and help to leverage that. So we encourage you to join us at Business Day at the Capitol if you're able to join us. The other aspects of this, your leadership around those business roundtables is really critical. We've gotten really great responses from our businesses, saying that this is the, this is the time where they have seen no other engagement like before, the way that we see it now. And we, we, it's really a testament to all of you for your investment and your commitment to us and the dedication to this region. So we will pause for any questions that you may have for us.
Mr. Chair. Thank you. Not a question, more so just a compliment. I, I really think that what we observed during the last year especially was so much engagement from business, the business community and your organization as well. But to collectively strengthen our voice in St. Paul, because of the trifecta, as you said, things are happening so rapidly, and, and that's, that's fine and dandy. However, to strengthen the voice in terms of raising concerns and perspective, it was really helpful to have the chamber really helping to gather the groups of people to do that, but to organize the meetings and the roundtables really, really was helpful. And I, I think you're right, even though there may be some things that we had concerns with, we probably made way more connections down there than we've had in a long, long time. My only comment is if we could have our Day at the Capitol not on a blizzard day, that would be fantastic for participation. I know that's-
Sure, we'll guarantee that this year.
Ms. Grinberg walks on water, but maybe not that much. So that's my only comment. But thanks again for advocating for not only the region, but specifically Clay County as well, Chris.
Yeah, maybe you could start with a picture of, of the Capitol with nice green grass.
Oh, sure. Okay.
I did think about that, Commissioner. When I added that in, I was like, maybe not my best move here. People might not be liking the snow picture.
Mr. Chair, if I can, I, I want to concur with Commissioner Mojo about the work that you do and, and, you know, that when you talk about things moving faster, and unfortunately, when things move faster, a lot of times, things fall through the cracks, as we've noticed in a few things here on public policy. But having said that, one party control all, it's, it's, you kind of, you take what you get, I guess, you know? But, but at the same point in time, I, we certainly had concerns over the, the issue regarding the, the Leave Act.
Paid family leave.
Paid family leave act, that, the cost to the county and, and the unknown and, and the ability to go out and hire when you have to reserve those spots, how do you deal with all those issues? And, and I don't think that's over. I don't think that topic is finished yet, but I want to thank you for your efforts and, and at least better informing St. Paul on some of the consequences of those things. So thank you for that.
Thank you for that. It is one of those things, Catherine mentioned this, we just had a wrap-up meeting with chambers all across the state of Minnesota, and we were brought up at least four times in that meeting about the work specifically that Clay County and Morehead did to have the conversations, to push the issue, to question the legislation. As Catherine mentioned, over 15 chambers took our letter and adopted it and put it out in their community. So it is, it does make a difference. At the, at the very end, we didn't see the, you know, the Senate change their mind on that. But I will say, now will be the time between now and 2026 when they actually get this implemented. Well, we do have opportunity to influence what the outcome looks like, and we will be very, we'll be very active in those conversations as well.
Just an observation on my part, I was part of the first Morehead Day, Morehead Area Day at the Capitol. I had gone up to the Capitol a number of times with the League of Cities and with the Minnesota Chief Police Association. I've never seen such preparation. The level of preparation there exceeded anything. And I'm not being critical of the other two organizations. It's just, this was, the, the briefings were concise, they gave us the information we needed, the appointments were dramatic, because we had a good group of people there, and they saw that this is not the end of the road out there somewhere on the Red River, that we're part of a metro area, and that's a point we need to get across. I was also really gratified, I know Commissioner Mojo was there as well, with the meeting with Senator Kupac on the Paid Family Leave Act. You did a spectacular job of rallying the, the business people in our community and gave them a venue where they were respectfully able to express their concerns. And I, you know, I appreciate the senator showing up because that was a roomful of people that really viewed this issue quite differently than, than he did. But the conversation was good. We didn't prevail on that, but it certainly wasn't for lack of preparation and trying. So thank you very much for the, the good work in those areas.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I did have one question concerning all the people you're bringing in that are working here. Are you involved at all as far as going to other countries or bringing people in? Like, I guess I'm referring to the Fargo Forum article yesterday, they brought a couple of people from Ukraine over and stuff like that. So are you involved in that type of work too?
Sure. I'll let Jenna touch on that.
I think that's an excellent question. We, as an organization, don't directly source talent from other countries, but what we do is we have partnerships with the organizations that are bringing talent from other countries into the region and working alongside them to acclimate. So making sure that they have connections to, if there's a need for English service learning, to make sure that there's connections with the adult learning centers and nonprofits that offer those services, or to make sure that there's connections with other individuals from that community or that country. Because everybody wants a slice of home, right? Regardless, and especially if you're from the Ukraine right now, when you come here, that's a, an awful situation that's happening over there. So making sure that we're connecting with some really passionate volunteers who organize, you know, public outing events with groups of families that are from the Ukraine. There is, we went to the Red Hawks game a few weeks ago, but it poured and rained outside. But you, all the individuals, you know, went out and pushed cars out of the rain in the middle of the street. And so I was like, well, yep, definitely, they're a part of the community. So just really making sure that there's those connections to home, to their new home, to make sure that there's sustainability and employment and that there's resources available. And every chance that we get, we go to the airport and we help welcome. And if there's ever an opportunity that anyone in this room would like to join us in welcoming somebody, come in at the airport, please reach out. You can join us because that is an amazing, amazing thing to be a part of.
And Chair, girls, I might add that as we see the demand for workforce continuing, we're being asked to be at the table a lot more around how do we vet immigrants or refugees, new Americans, and what countries could we be focusing on? What are there already existing relationships? We're working with our businesses now to do an, kind of a little assessment with the businesses of what does their makeup of, of diversity look like from the different countries? And then if they are looking at or more willing to hire more new Americans, can we provide them training to help them with some of that acclimation of those individuals within their businesses? So although we've got, as Jenna said, there are organizations that are out there actually recruiting, many of the companies are using organizations to recruit new American talent. We are actually looking at the acclimation and the training for business leaders to understand, what does this look like if we want a more diverse employee base? What types of things do we need to do differently within our company in order to do those types of things? So that's our role, is on the acclimation and the training side of it. Could it in the future? I will tell you, there's a lot of conversation now about a comprehensive five-year plan to look at workforce as well as economic development, public policy. That could be a piece in the, in the future, that is a recruitment tactic that we are actually looking at. And with us, Economic Development Corporation, Downtown Morehead, Inc., we could figure out what the strategy is around which countries, what are the barriers, what are the things that we do influences the policy side? So when we did our DC fly-in, when we were out in Washington DC, we had a significant amount of time focused on immigration reform and the fact that we've got some significant challenges with our immigration policies. How do we help to even move the needle in a more positive way on some of those immigration pieces? So that's not directly in the countries bringing new Americans here, but we also know, for instance, one of the visa programs has a cap of 10 individuals. Why can't it be 25 and allow companies to have more? So there is a public policy side of that work that we're doing as well.
Are there quite a few organizations you work with that are involved in bringing people over from countries? Or, I don't know if you have any idea how many companies there are, or what is it, companies? Is it organizations?
Organizations, yeah.
I would say organizations, and we work closely with two of them right now, and we're aware of another one that has just started up. And some of that training and development that Shannon was mentioning comes directly out of our nonprofit roundtables, where we're working with nonprofits that serve, that serve that population here in the community to make sure that that training is co-created, that has an equitable voice along, alongside it. So closely, we work with two of them, and that we're aware of one that's starting on up that's approached us.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
We do appreciate all the work that you guys are doing. It looks like you've got a lot of new programs going on. Thank you for that.
We do. Thank you.
Yeah, I just did want to make a comment, and it was mainly about your Ignite initiative. Just hearing that over the last few years, watching that grow, it just really is inspiring. I certainly, my perspective, I think it's changed the face of our Chamber of Commerce and the way it goes about things. And really, that everything through education, you know, I think is such an important piece. And I'm glad to hear we're going to be working toward the next session on the support of those career academies that you mentioned, Katie. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you for your presentation. Okay, with that, we'll move on to the request to approve the replace vacated LPN position for detox. Troy and Kathy.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Yes, today we are here to request approval to replace a full-time budgeted LPN position due to a recent resignation. We do need to have nurses on every shift to, to make sure that we're able to, to bill for with our withdrawal management program, so.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the replacement of the LPN position.
We have a motion, a second. Do you have a question? Are we gonna, when we move to a new place next year, are we gonna have more of these positions that you're gonna need?
There will be more LPN and RN positions that we'll be advertising for, yep.
Are we getting applications for those, or have we applied for this for a while?
Yeah, it's, you know, it's a very competitive field. Nursing is extremely difficult, especially when you're attracting people for a withdrawal management detox position. Those positions are, you know, a little harder to recruit because of the need for, you know, the psych backgrounds and, and needing those kind of things. But I'm optimistic, you know, that we can get these positions hired.
Yeah. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I think to Troy, just as part of your budget planning for next year, you're looking at kind of a phased approach, so you're not looking to try to find, you know, 10 new LPNs and RNs in one week. You're looking at trying to do it.
Correct. We can stagger it as we're opening beds, you know, and hiring people, so.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion, a second, to approve the hiring of an LPN. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Hopefully get someone on board. Okay, with that, we'll go into a budget presentation by Cory for the Sound Waste Department.
Good morning, and thank you for having me. I'm gonna try and keep it as brief as possible, and we'll just go down from top to bottom, and I'm gonna point out a few of the changes that, that I've done with the budget for this year, some of the highlights, and hopefully no lowlights. So if you start at the very top, the special assessment is at 1.4 million. That's based on our current rate. Right now, I don't propose a change at this point. That is something we may have to look at in the future. Just an example, that pays for our compactor, and the last time we replaced our compactor, it was $600,000. The next one's gonna be closer to 1.2 million. So we'll have to make some adjustments there in the future if we fall up short. So if you move down into the expense part of that page, the telephone and photocopying, you see a big change there, 37% minus than 100%. I moved some of that into the RRC budget. Since we're all consolidated now, I didn't see a point of having everybody trying to figure out their own budgets for that, so we just consolidated it into one. If you move down a little further, the travel and expenses, I reduced that by 40%. With the new conference room at the RRC, we are able to actually host classes now. We sent four people through the class last spring, or last winter, and we plan on having at least one- at least one class there a year so we can get our people trained, you know, in-house rather than having to send them all over the state, so. Go on to page two, composting, there's no change. Page three, the recycling budget, salaries in part-time, we reduced that, or I reduced that by 59%. We are looking at potentially sharing one part-time position with household hazardous waste rather than having the three. We would reduce that to, if we can get the right people in place, that'll save us some time there. Down to repair, equipment repair and maintenance, I moved that to the RRC because once again, we're all in one place, so we're using the same equipment. Further down, 96% reduction in signs. We have a new building, so there's new signs. I don't plan on putting any more up because people don't follow them anyway. No, that's not funny. Public education, once again, the office supplies, we moved that, so there's 100% reduction there. Down to household hazardous, the part-time recycling person, we increased it there. We didn't have one last year, so that, I actually put it in their budget, so that's the same amount as we removed from the upper portion. Once again, we're looking to share there. If you go down to travel expenses and conference registration, those increased. The conferences are going up, and we also have, with the new hire, we'll have to send them to HHW classes, and Julie will be attending some conferences this year as she's presenting, so we increased that. Existing landfill, if you look in the revenue, the existing landfill fees, that is based on our current fees, and we don't recommend a change at this time. So we're doing okay there. The rent went up 140%. We are looking at renting our, our hayland that we have at landfill, and we need to redo our contract, so minor change, but it's, it's a big number when you look at the percentage. Moving down into the expenses, other professional services, I reduced that from 500,000 to 300,000. We're not building anything this year, so we're hoping to save some money there, hopefully for a couple of years, because kind of burned out on this building thing.
If you're not doing any building, do we need any money in there, or what?
What's that?
You're reducing it from 500 to 300.
Yes, we still use other professional services for like our testing and fees and stuff, or our studies at the landfill, but it's just not consulting for new buildings and those kind of things. The miscellaneous, on the next page, miscellaneous Minnesota landfill surcharge for the Perum Resource Recovery Facility, that went up $12,000, so that increased that number. That also comes out of our internal service fund, so that's included in that 1.4 million we talked about in the beginning. If you go down to the Resource Recovery Center, there's miscellaneous revenue of $97,000. That's what we're looking at, the City of Moorhead paying us for their portion of the utilities, so we had to include that in the budget if we're including the expense. And then the printing and publishing, that went up 200%, and that's as a result of moving out of the other, other two departments. We're not having any printing and publishing done through the household hazardous or recycling, so it, it all goes into the, to the Resource Recovery Center budget. It's not really an increase because we just moved it, but it shows up as an increase in the, in the percentage line. And the last page, office supplies, we moved those from other areas, so there's where that increase comes from. I did add $10,000 into the equipment over $500. When we get our new skid steer, we may need a sweeper attachment and post, potentially some forks for it, so, and those are running about $3,000 apiece. So we will look at those as we need them, but I wanted it in the budget just in case. And then if you look at the bottom line, we are looking at about a 9.09% reduction in budget, so with that, is there any questions?
I, I always go to the depreciation line item. In this particular case, the 1.1 million depreciation, what it?
That's off the new RRC. It's 1.1 million a year. And that number was calculated by Lori. That was actually in last year's budget also.
So, so is that, is that, is that where we're putting into the internal service fund, or?
No, that's just depreciation on the building. That, it just shows up as an expense.
So, so, so we're, we're, depreciation, it's, it's not, it's not, you don't write out a check for depreciation.
No, but it's just included in the budget. So if you look at the bottom number and take that out, we're actually.
Right, but, but it, yeah.
I'd like to get that 1.00 million out there, too.
Well, I, I mean, it's, it's, to me, it's more something that, it's a capital value than an annual expenditure value, you know, but I, I wanted to just go back to also, on, would be the, excuse me, the existing landfill, page two of that budget, the very last expenditure line item is 6954, which, for 270,000 for closure, post-closure. That, that's actually another one where we don't write a check out for that. It's a, it's a mandated by the state that you have to put so many dollars away for the purpose of closing a landfill, regardless of how much money we might already have in that fund. It still requires us to put some in there. So again, it's another one of those deals where you're basically reserving money. That, that one's a little bit more real than depreciation, the 1.1 million, but it's one that's not, it's not an annual expenditure where you write checks for. Just wanted to point that out. So when we see our revenues over expenditures rise, that's another reason why. Just like the depreciation line.
Well, Steve, when you see this not, minus 9%, that should look pretty good for you.
I did my best.
You did a real good job there. I think you're coming in number one on our percentages. Any other questions, Cory? Now, thank you very much for working on this.
Thank you for having me.
With that, we'll go with the Marine, with her budget. With the Historical Society.
Oh, thank you for your continued support of our efforts and for this opportunity to just share a little bit about our programming in support of our request. I'm happy to report that 2023 has been a healthy bounce-back year for us in terms of visitor to the museum, although we are not at the 32,000 that we were in 2019 yet. We are in line to meet our admissions gift shop and membership goals, and we have also been successful in writing and receiving a number of grants over the year, and our many donors have been very generous. We continue to serve our Clay County constituents in a variety of ways. Our exhibit Idaho Manapi, Clay County at 150, remains up through 2024, and we had quite a lot of school kids last May in particular. That's our month for school tours. About 1,500 children came to the museum to go through the history exhibits. Archivist Mark Peel and Programming Director Marcus Krieger both continue to make numerous programs off-site. They are asked for service clubs and senior centers and all kinds of different situations in which they give presentations about Clay County history throughout the year. And then we continue to preserve a collection of over 12,000 historical artifacts, all dealing with Clay County history. And we're working on improving our collections' conditions by upgrading our storage equipment as grants are awarded. So county, county funds are used to support staff salaries. Archivist Mark Peel, whose work is widely known and appreciated in the community and who's often quoted in the newspaper, in the media, when historical perspective is needed on any issue. Collections Manager Lisa Vida, who has care of the 12,000 3D objects, and our collections assistant Kevin Wander, who continues to help catalog new donations. We get about 100 donations a year, and a donation can be anything from one object to 300 objects in one donation. The long-term goal is to make more of our collection accessible to the public, and so through online means. So we have many photographs and artifact records that are now available to the public on a website called Minnesota Collections. Staff are currently developing a new Clay County history exhibit about food production, tentatively called Land to Table, that will open in 2025. I guess the biggest news and the thing that will hit us hard is that Mark Peel has decided to retire at the end of this year. So please mark your calendars, Saturday, December 16th at 1:00 PM, we'll be commemorating his 37 years of service as Clay County's archivist. And he's impossible to replace. He's a walking encyclopedia of Clay County knowledge, but we have hired internally a young woman with a great deal of experience in archival work, Petra Gunderson-Lath, and she'll be starting at the beginning of the year. So as we are on a calendar year for our fiscal year, we do not yet have a budget. We, we approve our budgets in December, and I will forward that to you as soon as it is approved by the Board of Directors. Does anyone have any questions?
I guess we got your budget in front of us, so I guess we're gonna take that in consideration along with the other requests we got.
Mm-hmm.
Hopefully we can come up with some money for you. I'm sure Steve will take a good look at this and Lori and see what we can do for you.
We appreciate it so much. It is an important, a very important part of our budget, I must tell you. We do enjoy a very generous donation by the City of Moorhead of the in-kind donation of space for our exhibits and storage for our collections, but we're very much in need of the, the revenue, the income for us as well, so thank you so much.
Do you accept all the donations that you get, or do you have to?
We have to be very particular. We look for, do we have any gaps in the collection? For example, we don't have much Korean or Vietnam War donations yet, but we have 27 potato peelers, so there's a point at which you say, you know, we have enough. We have enough wedding dresses from the 1800s, you know, things like that. So we're actually also in the process of de-accessioning, which is to carefully consider what objects we might be able to let go of, especially if they are not Clay County objects, as sometimes happens in the collection. You, a past collections person might have said, oh, yes, we need that, and it might belong to Norman County, and so we send it off to Norman County, but that's all part of the process.
Okay.
Marine, you might add to that, if you will. Tell us what year you're starting that on and how you're going forward.
Oh, go.
Just briefly.
At the beginning of the collection process, which was 1936, many people gave their items on indefinite loan. Indefinite loan is something we no longer do, but the idea was, we'll give you our family treasure for a while, and then we'll come and get it back. Well, they never came and got it back, so we have men, you know, several hundred objects that we then have to go through a lengthy process according to state law of abandoned property to claim it. We have to contact each of the, the donor, or the lenders at their last known address, and of course, many of these people are deceased. But we have sent out certified letters to every person. They come back unopened, of course, and then we have to publish it three times in the local papers, so that's a, we're doing that for just 1936 and 1937 right now, so it's going to be a lengthy process, but soon it will all be ours, so.
Is that a law you'd like to get changed, or is that just something that's there?
We are grateful that there is a process. You know, it's only been since 2004 that that law's been in place, that has given us a process to, to claim ownership of objects. So we're just, we're willing to go through the process, and it's fine to, to ensure that no family member who donated it, you know, desperately wants back their family treasure.
Okay, very good, thank you. Any other questions? Well, thank you for your presentation, Marina.
Thank you.
Hopefully Steve will give you a good look over. Okay, with that, we'll move to the budget presentation. Nancy with the Assessor's Office? Remember, you're going to go up against 9.09 minus.
Not gonna do that. Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. Today I would be presenting our 2024 Assessor Department budget. We'll start with revenue. In our department, we do charge for the services that we conduct for townships and cities, and for the '24 calendar year, there will be a change in the rate. So we're anticipating about a 5% increase in revenue. Going down into expenses, you can see most of our expenses are tied in with wages and benefits for our five-person departments. The things that I'll highlight are other professional services, and in that, that is our annual CAMA fee that we send off to Vanguard. And then we are also a member of MCC's tax user group, and there's an annual fee for that. If we should have a tax court case that requires outside counsel or an appraisal, we would make that request to you on a case-by-case demand. We have slightly increased our training. We have a new hire who is not licensed, so we will have to work to get that person licensed, and so those fees do come at a little bit higher cost. And then there's also the annual and education that's required for the remaining staff as well.
Excuse me?
Sure.
When we hire someone, are you, are we paying for the training?
Yes, we do.
That person?
Yes, we do.
Okay, thank you.
And the only other thing that I will highlight is the travel and expense. While travel and expense, we haven't seemed to surpass our budget, there was a suggestion that we should look at the amount that we have in there due to having fleet cars and the increase that's projected for mileage on fleet cars, so I decided to leave that flat for this year. So all in all, our expenses are going up by about 3.89%. Any questions?
Any questions, Nancy?
I'd just like to point out, Mr. Chair, that in terms of overall department, our budget is quite small in comparison to the entire county, but at least once or twice a year, it probably is about the most talked-about department in Clay County, so.
Gets a lot of attention.
It gets a lot of attention, yes.
Well, thank you for the good work you've been doing. Thank you for your presentation.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
So, does anybody need a break now, or should we?
Why don't we do James real quick? He's.
Okay. James, have you ready? Rehire, request approval to rehire an open position as a care unit?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Yeah, I'm here this morning to request permission to rehire an open position in our secure unit. It's in our 2023 budget.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the rehire in the open, of the open position.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to rehire an open, open position as a care unit. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you.
Now, we'll take a short break. Question now, Curtis here, we can get going again.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mr. Chair, I have a quick update on the grant.
Hello. Hey, good morning. I hope your Labor Day weekend was good and hot. Quick update, over the years with the grant, the Operational Veteran Service Grant from the state, you guys remember the multiple signing papers, contracts, everything the Chair had to sign, but they've streamlined it considerably lately, well, this year, apparently. So 2022, 2023 is closed out, that's good. We've closed that one out, and we've already did 22, 2023 to 2024 is done and paid to the county, and it's in our account, so. With that said, there's. So with that said, there's no more resolution for me to come to the board. That has been taken out, and it's all done online with digital signature. So I didn't know how to, I've been signing every year since I've been here, so I'll be continuing to do that. I think it's just an update for you guys to know that the grant has been closed and the new one has been paid. So maybe if that's okay, I'll continue to do that every year.
How much is this?
$12,500 every year, and that's most of my operations in the office, training. We did a digital sign this year for, on the wall on the outside for flyers and communication purposes. So it's probably 98% that I use that grant for all my expenses outside of the budget. My budget's probably 90% wages, so. But, so it helps tremendously, which is nice.
This is going to go over down in years, is it?
Well, it could go down if I don't spend it, so it kind of gets tough towards May if I don't have it spent. So then I buy some marketing items like squishy balls and...
I hate those budgets where you spend, if you don't spend it, you lose it.
Use or lose, yeah. I haven't been in that situation, nor do I want to try be in that situation to pay money, because it's paid in advance, so if you don't spend it, you gotta, we gotta pay the difference back. So I don't want to be in that. I'd rather spend it.
Okay, very good.
And then not be in that situation. So I think future years with the streamlining, I'll just come and update you all about the grant closure and the renewal.
Okay.
So this 2020-23 four has been paid, and we'll be spending that throughout the year.
Very good.
Okey-dokey.
Very good.
Thanks, good seeing y'all.
Thanks for the info. Okay, with that, we'll move on. Request approval for front door replacement project for the courthouse. Joe?
Morning, Mr. Chair, Board members. Yeah, so the front door has, last couple of years have given us a lot of problems. We've worked with our locksmith to do a few things, and nothing's working anymore. So I've gotten a couple of different quotes to replace the full door with the handicap controls, everything like that. And so I'm looking to move forward with this project using Fargo Glass and Paint in the amount of $27,950, and I have this budgeted in my building maintenance repair line item, so within the courthouse budget.
Is that just the two front doors, the outside doors?
Yeah, just the outside exterior doors. So that includes all the controls to the security guards and everything like that. So, yeah. Security guards definitely have dealt with this between us and maintenance, them and maintenance. We've been battling this one for a couple of years, so.
Okay. Mr. Chair? Yes? I move for approval. Request approval to front door replacement project.
A second.
And a second? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Joe, really briefly, I had some calls last week about what updates were going on at the Government Center. People were questioning just because there was a lot of plastic.
Oh, yeah, we...
Just update really briefly what was going on.
Yeah, just, just, just an update, we've been working with, we found some leaks over in the auditor's office at first additionally to, so the inside, we were repairing that, but the outside, when we went to repair that, we found there was a lot of leaks in the stucco in there. So and as when we called them in and we did a kind of assessment of the whole building, and we found several leaks, so we've, we're just in the process of fixing that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. We'll move on. The next one, request to fill upcoming vacant Assistant County Attorney position.
I believe Ms. Foss is on her way up, Mr. Chair.
Pardon?
I believe Ms. Foss is on her way up, Mr. Chair.
Oh, I see, okay.
She probably thought she had another 10 minutes. Maybe she wasn't used to being here quite 10 minutes early.
I'm going to do the change order for the resource recovery.
You think we don't ever come ahead of the schedule? We're getting...
No comment.
Mr. Chair, can we move maybe to the number 14, the change order number eight for the resource recovery while we wait?
We can do that. Request approval for change order number eight for resource recovery, family facility project.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As this board's certainly aware, this past fall, our resource recovery facility opened, but unfortunately, we were unable to finish up some of the final things, and so that process has been going on this spring and summer. And so we are bringing change order number eight. It's really a culmination of a series of different things, many of which have already been talked about at this board, but we're capturing, capturing in with this change order. The, I could go through anything in detail, but just to kind of, as an oversight, our major, major issue of the $276,000 was $130,051 in heat temp. We had worked extensively with XL Gas, or XL Energy to get a gas line to the facility. Unfortunately, we did not get that, and so we had some $130,000 of additional cost that came with that. We had $50,000 or nearly $51,000 in increased costs due to ready-mix delays for our metal building, the scales situation. We also had some, a number of these are related to the inspection, inspections that needed to take part and change. And then also, the drive-through area is a, not a heated area, and we've talked about in great detail about some of the challenges that we've had with slippery, slippery conditions once winter rolls around. And so we did make a number of changes, both to the facility and also the, to the $33,000 for the shot blast floor at the drive-through. And so this, again, the total cost of this, we did, I shouldn't mention, we also did have four credits, which are fairly significant in, in the change of what we sometimes see. And so the net, the net change order for this would be $276,267.59. It would be a change to the guaranteed maximum price of $19,415, excuse me, $415,613.8. And this is a document that Lori provided, I just provided the handout this morning with the increase. For this total project, we had, we had revenues of $21,899,093. With this change order, we would be a total committed to $21,957,865, which would leave us a cash remaining deficit of $58,771, which, as we've spoke about previously, would come from our, from Corey's cash, cash reserves. We do have one remaining pay application that's going to cover retainage and some landscaping. We're anticipating that's going to be right around $26,000. And so that would, that will probably come in before the board in a couple of weeks, and then that should, that should take care of the, the payments for this facility.
Steve, is, so the number you just talked about that's remaining, is that, is that still incorporated within these blue numbers that Lori has?
Yes.
So that...
No, excuse me. So it would be an additional $26,000 or roughly.
Over and above the 58?
Yes, that's correct.
And, and the bond issued number, does that include our discount?
Yeah, the premium, the premium amount is included in there.
Any, we have to approve this ticket.
We do, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, we need the bond approval.
I move change order number eight.
Second.
We got a motion, the second, to approve change order number eight. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Hey, Pam, are you ready for fill upcoming vacant Assistant County Attorney position?
Good morning, everybody. I'm here sitting in for Mr. Melton to make the request that we be allowed to backfill a position for an Assistant County Attorney. One of our attorneys has taken a opportunity closer to the cities and closer to family, and her last day will be September 22nd. So we're asking permission to backfill that position and get it posted, hopefully get someone into that position sooner than later.
Okay.
So you're looking for a motion to fill the position and then backfill?
Yeah.
Okay. Because it's a budgeted position, I'll make that motion to fill the, the vacant position with backfill.
We got a motion, the second, to fill the position. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you for coming up.
Thank you.
Okay. Request authorization to execute a contract with Gertz Construction to provide a construction manager as advisor services for the Department of Motor Vehicle Project.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As this board's aware, on October 1st, this board approved the hiring of Gertz Construction and authorized my office to, to work to enter into contract negotiations. The contract before you this morning is, looks, should almost be exact to what we saw with our withdrawal management. Even though this is a smaller project, Gertz Construction agreed to pre-construction services of $20,000 lump sum and then a 5%, 5.5% of total construction cost, not to include our soft costs. Based on, just to give the board an idea, based on the estimate that was provided for this project on June 27th in our board packet, the range, depending on the finishes of this facility, ranged a cost of $4,352,266 to 500, or excuse me, $5,495,061. And in this example, that would, that would mean a fee of between $239,374.63 to $302,228.35. And so I have had the opportunity to have the County Attorney's Office look through this contract and agree that it's ready for your consideration. That I yield for any questions.
Any discussion on this? Motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve exit, the executing of the contract with Gertz Construction for the CM position on the DMV project.
A second.
We got a motion, the second, to approve this contract with Gertz Construction. Any further discussion? All in favor?
May, really quickly, just of note, because we are working with them on the other project, it really has served to be in the county's best interest in regards to timeliness and saving the county dollars. I know they were really helpful in trying to mitigate getting us into a building as quick as possible, and also knowing that maybe doing so during the winter, making sure we were able to do some groundwork before then to save us dollars. So huge appreciation to the company for doing that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Very good.
Thank you.
Now, we go on committee reports. Jenny, can you start us out this week?
Just give me a second.
Tell us about the fair and stuff.
Okay, I believe that would take us back to August 22nd, if I'm not mistaken. We did have a, I guess, I already reported on the PIC committee meeting in the morning of the 22nd, since we did have a committee or a board meeting that day. The report in the state fair is that Clay County brought almost 30 kids down to the state fair. We are represented very, very well by that bright and enthusiastic group of young people, and I know the following week, there were several Clay County kids that brought static exhibits down to the state fair. Fortunate that Clay County Extension offers that opportunity for those young people. And then on the 28th, I participated in the AMC Tax Forfeiture Work Group meeting. Boy, that was about a seven and a half hours of wandering through what the Supreme Court ruling with Hennepin County did in terms of tax forfeiture properties and how counties will work through the, the process. We are working towards a recommendation for all counties to use kind of as a framework. We did have a specialist fly-in from Georgia. So he has spent the last several years really working closely with that. It's, it's a fascinating process in terms of, of equity and who's due the equity and how counties will work through that. It's not only something that will affect counties, but all municipalities and school districts as well. At 1:00, I called into the substance use, no, that was canceled that day, wasn't it? That meeting was canceled, but I did go into the office and talk with the administrator on what had happened at the meeting that I'd missed with the DMV meeting earlier. Commissioner Campbell will update on that. The 29th, I attended the Lakeland Mental Health Center construction update that is going on at the Morehead Facility. If you are able to drive by, they really are expanding the campus and will continue to institute new and progressive programs to help address mental health illness in the community. On Thursday, the 31st, I attended a discussion with Commissioner Campbell and Administrator Larson on the HRA funding requests. We did have some questions that we'd asked for more clarity on, and Darla Lee and Steve were able to provide us more insight there. And, sorry, the week off throws me. I believe that maybe, we had another meeting the following day, too. We did have another meeting on the HR request that Friday, but that then concludes my reports.
Thank you. August 22nd, we had an insurance committee meeting. Again, we went over medical claims review and more discussion about when we do go, when and if we would go into self-insurance. We talked about the one particular plan going from $37.50 to $4,000. Under IRS regulations, it needed to go up to that amount. We do have the 8% premium rate cap this year. Dental, Delta Dental, we did agree to the 9% increase in that premium through the insurance committee. Even with that 9% increase, we are still below the amount that we were paying before we switched to Delta, so it still is a reasonable amount. Division Insurance has a two-year rate pass with no changes this year. And then we continued to discuss the Clay County insurance contribution component of it. Based on the new rates, there are, there are two of the four policies that would no longer pay 100% of the single premium under the new rates, based, based on the county's current contribution to the, to the plan. So that, there's been no, there's no recommendation made on, on what should be done with that yet, but we continue to have those discussions. On Wednesday, the 23rd, we had a Prairie Lake Solid Waste meeting, and that meeting was quite lengthy. There was a lot of things going on there. But I do want to acknowledge that Brian, the plant manager of the facility, made a point in, in commenting about Clay County and our, and our facility, and we, we are, we are now sending to perm the cleanest garbage of any county, if you can imagine garbage being clean. But from the standpoint of that, what that facility's been able to do, and of course, when we talk about cleaner garbage, it means it's, it's better for the incineration process and creating the best, best amount of steam and, and bypassing things that, that shouldn't be going through the facility. So that was really good news. So that was really good news. We did report that the tipping fee did go from $138 to $145. So that's, that was that, where that $12,000 came in for Clay County. That was talked about in Cory's budget this morning. We had significant discussion, we did talk about the 2024 budget. That's, that's been approved. And we, we decided to, I had talked to them about, for the COLAs for that facility, I don't know if I mentioned to this board before, but they'd talked, before, they just, they used 2.5%. It was just 2.5% every year. And, and I said, well, how did you, where do you come up with that? Well, we just do it. It's 2.5%. And so I, I, because we're a multiple county membership, I, I had them look at the, at what we do for the Triple RDC. And in the Triple RDC, we take the COLAs of all the member entities and we average them out. And that becomes a COLA. And so in doing that for 2024, instead of that COLA rate being 2.5%, it went to 3.1%. And, and the, the good thing about that is, you know, if you, if you stay at a lower or a flat number like that, it's, that's when your grid's going to come out of, you know, it's not going to be competitive when you, you know, when you have cost of living numbers that are higher in other areas that we compare to. So not only did that, then they, they looked at, at that as being the policy moving forward to, to use that, that formula. We did get a report about the added entrance meeting that was held. MCIT Insurance, we are going to receive a workman's comp dividend. And that's in the air of about $10,000. We did have an additional expenditure that also came up to the tune of about $40,000. And I can't remember again what that was, but. Yeah, so I, and, and then the, one of the things that I do report on is the, where we usually at with our deliveries at Clay County. And, you know, we had been, we were up in excess of being at, at one point, we were like 1.3 or, or 1,300 tons short. At the end of July, that number was down to 733. And then Brian reported to us that by the time we had our August meeting, that that number was down below 500 tons. And that's kind of in that target range. So we're really, we've really caught up on our, the amount of delivery that we had to that facility, which is good news because we pay for it whether we deliver it or not. So that was excellent news there. On the 24th, I had several meetings. The first one was our solid waste advisory committee meeting. There was a update from the city regarding the compostable paper bags that they use for yard waste, that they're not going to be using that anymore within the city. And then there was also some comments and questions regarding accessibility of the Resource Recovery Center for people who might be bringing items there that they can't unload by themselves, whether there might be handicapped people or whatever. And Cory assured that, that in that particular instance, there is, there is assistance available. In most instances, though, you know, we also have, our, our people have to, we have to be concerned about how much they left. We don't need to, we don't want to be having any workman's comp injuries because somebody's trying to do too much, too. So one of the things that's encouraged is that, you know, if some, if people are bringing things that might, might be a little bit heavier to maybe, to try to bring some help with when they, when they bring that stuff in there to assist with. But again, if they can't, we still manage to help them. We do have equipment that can lift things. And we are having discussions. Becker County now has a shredder for mattresses. So we're, we're in conversations with Becker County about the potential of sending our mattresses there. Cory is working on that. And we are also still working, I think Commissioner Mojo, we're trying to schedule a meeting dealing with some other transportation issues that may become a benefit and savings to us moving forward.
Is there a possibility we could get a shredder, too, or?
Well, we've, we've talked about, we've talked about that. They are, they are quite expensive. And, you know, so from our standpoint, it, it might work better for us to be able to collaborate with. And again, that, there's a lot of times when we have trucks that are deadheading one way or another. And that's part of what we're trying to resolve, is how we could do that. So there could be times where maybe if there's an empty truck going, Becker County brings a lot of their waste to Fargo that they don't, that they do not bring to the perm. And so when they bring that waste to Fargo, they're going back empty. You know, so we're, we're looking at ways, well, how could we maybe end some of those empty, deadhead transportation times and, and be able to, they could stop at our place and pick up mattresses, for example, and take them to, to Becker County, so. But yes, we have, we have in the past looked at, at our own shredder as well. Then that afternoon, the first of two afternoon meetings, we had the Moore-Clay County Joint Powers Authority meeting. And again, we're moving right along. In this particular meeting, we approved one, five, what we refer to as replacement housing differential payments. So when somebody is bought out and there's, there's a, it gets to be some comparable properties. And when you, when you can't find something in that, there's a, there's a dollar amount that's determined to be up to an amount that they can use to relocate. And that's something that, that it's up to that amount. And if they don't use it, then they, they aren't paid that, that amount. And then we did approve one access agreement with Ames Construction. The diversion authority meeting was at, was also that same day. And that's just a kind of a routine business. There was some, we went over some more budget stuff for 2024. Insurance risk policies. We talked a little bit about how we stand with contingencies after updated numbers for land acquisitions. And we still seem to be on track there. On the 28th, the motor vehicle construction, designed construction meeting. We did a, we saw our first 3D walkthrough of the design, which I, it, it's really, it's really impressive, I think. You'll, it'll, it'll be nice when you guys get to, when we can bring that, that to the full board. We talked about some outside deals with exterior dimensional lettering and signage on buildings and that type of thing. And I, that will be coming before all of us pretty soon. Joe gave an updated number on FFNE. That number had dropped considerably from the original amount. I think the original amount was, Steve helped me out, but I think it was well over $200,000, I think, originally. And then I, I think the number's down, down to around $112,000, if I'm, just kind of going off the top of my head here, but. Yeah, $112,000 is what it is now. That afternoon, we had a withdrawal management detox facility meeting. And, oh, by the way, if you, on the DMV, if you've driven by there, they're actually, walls are going up. If you, on the, starting on the north side and working their way around. So the masonry walls are going up on, on the withdrawal man, I should say, it's on the withdrawal management facility. And let's see. There's not a lot of other stuff to report on that. It's kind of, it's moving right along, so. Public Safety Committee, that's Commissioner Mojo mentioned about, we did meet to, or no, that was, Commissioner Ebering and I, we did meet, and, and this is in regards to that $942,000 that the state has provided. We, we heard from a lot of, a lot of our departments and entities on what they could do with those funds. And I think we've come up with some really good opportunities there that I think we'll be talking about those a little bit later today. So, and that, so that, I think there's some really good things going forward or being recommended there. We did have, and then on the 30th, we had the West Central Regional Water Project that's in Halsted. And the, we received a presentation from Jason Overby from the Lincoln Pipestone Rural Water District. There was a significantly, a significant conversation about the setup, going through the setup process on that. And then we, and then they, they gave us a recap, the Senate bonding tour, went through and looked at, at those particular, that particular project. And then the next step was in the, still, we have the judicial filing. There was some conversation, should the county boards be involved with, have a say in that? And, and I raised my hand that said, in this early going, we absolutely need to be involved with, with the process, in the judicial process as a step for authorization. Pope County has indicated that they're going to be including everything within the county that is not part of the Marshall-Pope Water District. And then very northern part of, of Pope County, they have, they have already established a separate water district. And so they're not going to include that, that area within ours. And then all of Norman County, and then we also mentioned to them that, that we had taken action to basically approve everything in Clay County, with the exception of the, with the exception of Moorehead and Dilworth, which already has adequate supplies. And there will be resolutions that are going to be, new resolutions that are going to be coming out and ask their boards to do. August 31st, we had a Red River Regional Dispatch Center special meeting. And basically, the sole purpose of that meeting was reviewing and determining the language in the land lease for the facility that was prepared, presentation by Eric Johnson, Steve Dirksen from the Fargo Fire Department, if I'm correct. And I, so I think there were, the language, I think we're in agreement there. There was some issue in terms of what happens 50 years from now. And should there be a super majority that would need to be involved with that? We had a differing opinion, and some of us on our side of the Red River, whether it needed to be. But as of right now, the city for the 50 years is offering it for $1, $1 a year lease. $1. For 50, for 50 years. So I, I, I thought that was a pretty fair amount of rent to pay, so. Then, as Commissioner Mojo said, we did, we did meet with Steve in regards to the Clay County HRA and, and their request, looking at potential options there. And I think we'll have, be having more discussion on that. Given this, is that this afternoon as well? Yeah, okay. That concludes my report.
Hey, Dave.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the 22nd of August, I remotely attended another 403 technical group meeting. We're trying to get Minnesota statute back in front of the legislature in the coming session. And it's a fairly painstaking process. We've got some of the private sector providers who were part of this. We're trying to build a consensus. It's what Steve railed it in the last three sessions. And I'm, it's, it's a good process for me to see, even though I'm not a technical expert, I'm going to have to report at AMC to the Public Safety Committee on this. We have legislation written that should address the need, but we can't get consensus with some of the private providers who may or may not lose some money on this, on these changes. So the work continues. On the 24th, as Commissioner Campbell mentioned, Steve and, he and I and Lori Johnson met on the public safety committee issue that will be looking at later today. Lori told us that she could prepare one of her amazing spreadsheets. And we had a second meeting remotely, or I was remote on, when did we do that? Three or four days later, I'm looking here at my notes, and I didn't put a date down. The 28th, I think. And the spreadsheet was prepared and we were able to look at a lot of options on this. And compliments to Steve and to Lori for great work on this. I think you're going to be happy to see what we've tool or crafted on this here, this afternoon. Also, on the 24th, the, the diversion authority met. Commissioner Campbell covered that pretty well in respect to everybody's time. I won't wade into some of the details, but it was general business. On the 31st, the dispatch center met, and that was covered by Commissioner Campbell. Later that day, Steve and I met with the grid Fargo-Moorhead EDC, some of the executive councils and, or commit, or executive board and the executive director to discuss some of the governance changes that have happened, or going to happen next year, how it impacts the Minnesota side and Clay County in particular. They're paring back pretty dramatically on the board from 33 board members, which I guess we all know, and five honorary board members. That's a little unwieldy. They're cutting it back to 13, 17. It's going to have an impact on public sector positions. And Joe presented some comparisons on the representation versus the cash that's put into, to the EDC. And we also discussed the Cass County program, where they're getting an awful lot of state funds to develop a job development authority and where and how that may impact us. So I think Joe, is he scheduled to come before the commission, Steve?
Next week.
Yeah. He'll, he'll have some, I think, information we probably want to consider on this. There's been a lot of work put into trying to get the private sector businesses more in control and more responsible for financing. And so we'll see. He'll, we'll have a presentation on that next week. And that completes my report.
All?
Thank you. My week was rather light, so just a couple of things. Commissioner Campbell mentioned about the Clay County Insurance Group. The only comment I'll make about that, he gave a good report overall. We're fortunate to have that 9% cap for next year. So with that, we're in good shape, but certainly continue to work on ideas as we're moving into the following years, what's going to be most effective for our group as a whole. On the, let's see, the, Monday, the 28th, I had a food commission meeting. Main things going on there are setting up the agenda, actually, for the Clay Food Commission meeting that's set up on Wednesday, the 13th, from 10:30 to 12 o'clock at the Farver City Commission Room. That's where the, the whole joint board gets together. Major, major things talked about that we're adding to the agenda as we come into the fall season, being able to relate, glean products and the education that goes with that for our community to make the most and out of the produce that we create through the summer, make sure it doesn't minimize the waste. doesn't minimize the waste. And then also, for people interested in pollinators, it's a good time to start doing that planning for what may be done next year and being mindful that there are some grants out there to help people get those started if they so wish. One disappointing thing is that we've had a very good nonprofit group called Food Partners in the North, Food in the North, excuse me, and they're, they are discontinuing their nonprofit, they'll continue through this year. One of the programs they did that it's been pretty widely popular is each, first Friday of each month called First Fridays, they have come up with a group that gets together and talks about different food events happening in our area, and education that goes with that. So over the next, over the next three months, we, as a steering committee, will be seeing what we can do to maybe look at different ways of engaging people throughout our area to have them come together for education, sharing of information, so. And then last, there will be, and I'll have more information on this during the month of September, there's an upcoming Hunger and Health Summit going to take place at Blue Stem on October 26th from 8:30 to 3:30. And that will involve about 100 people, and I'll have more, more detail to come on that. With that, that's my report.
I mean, it was just the water district meeting on August 30th. We had Jason Overby from the Lincoln Pipestone Water District, and he gave us a pretty good overview of what, how they run their water district and stuff like that. And found out most, ours is made up right now of commissioners, whereas county commissioners, and they, there is this pretty much private people from the, from the area. So, but the only difference we saw as far as that, and I think we're getting very close to getting our committee organized and getting it going and getting all the judicial things done. So it was a good, good informative meeting, so. With that, it's just a matter of notating, we have a meeting at 1:00 this afternoon with a work group where we gather for more information. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last, or on the 22nd, I participated in the insurance committee, it's been well covered. On the 23rd, we had county management, where we discussed the fleet policy that this board recently approved. We also discussed the risk management policy that's being, currently being developed. We continued our ongoing discussion on the 2024 budget and also a number of HR things, including open enrollment, which starts October 18th. On the 24th, we had MCC JPA meeting that has been well covered. Also, that afternoon, I met with Sheriff Empting and Chief Deputy Martin in regards to the, the changes into the SRO laws and the path forward for the Sheriff's Department. On the 25th, I met with Matt Jacobson from Planning and Zoning on a series of county issues relating to planning and zoning. On the 28th, we had a pre-budget meeting that we heard this morning from Solid Waste. On the 28th, we also had both the DMV and Withdrawal Management owners' meetings that have been addressed. On the 28th, we also had a Public Safety Committee meeting that we'll hear more about this afternoon. On the 29th, that morning, I was invited by Sheriff Empting and Chief Deputy Martin to meet with Senator Kupac and Representative Joy in regards to the SRO laws and the challenges that are being, I guess, being seen across the state of Minnesota. Appreciate their willingness to listen and hear out our concerns. On the 29th, I had a phone conversation with Ben Madsen in regards to the change order today, and talking about our final pay application, that process should be coming to, to an end here soon. On the 30th, I participated in the statewide local aid webinar. As we've saw from the legislature, we received a number of new funds this year, and this was one of those funds Clay County is looking at receiving, roughly $160,000 over the next two years. And that webinar talked about how we were able to spend that and who we are, who we are encouraged to collaborate with. On the 30th, I also met with Justin Sorum. As you're well aware, we've gone about a year and a half without an assistant engineer. We've not been getting any applications at all, and so we talked with Justin about some different ways that we could look to get help. He shared some different ideas, and we'll be bringing that probably before our pick here in the very near future. On the 30th, had a department head evaluation. On the 31st, as has been discussed, we also talked about the HRA funding discussion that afternoon. We met with Darren, Anna, and Lori in regards to, to the escalation of insurance that Commissioner Campbell mentioned, with some of the challenges of only having two, two plans that do now meet the individual's insurance fully paid. That's going to decrease next year by another one, and so we would just have one remaining. So continuing to look at and evaluate what the best way to move forward is there. As Commissioner Eberga mentioned, on 31st, we met with representatives from Cass County, City of Moorehead, Greater Fargo, more economic development in regards to the changes of the executive board and the formation of a new JPA. On the 1st, I met with Sheriff Empting on a series of different issues with the Sheriff's Department, and also I had an HR discussion. I did, did want to, I was asked to pass along from Sheriff Empting, we did receive a letter from Chief Zabalski, sharing their heartfelt appreciation for the efforts that our Sheriff's Department provide during one of the most tragic times of Fargo police history with the loss of Officer Wallen and the shooting of Officer Dotus and Haas. And so I'll pass that, pass that around to you. And as, as the chair mentioned, we do have a work group session scheduled at 1:00 today, and that concludes my report.
Mr. Milton didn't give me anything to share with the board today. Jackie, you got to take up about 13 minutes. Okay.
I do think, though, we need to tell Jackie, I think they opened up registration for the, I'm sorry, the annual conference, so make sure you let Jackie know today so we can do that.
Okay, I was just going to mention that, also forgot to mention that. We'll have to either cancel that December 5th meeting, because that, and conference.
Cancel it or move it.
I think, Mr. Chair, we, we knew last year, I'll look into that, but I, I think we made the adjustment at the beginning of the year this year, but I'll confirm that.
Very good, okay.
That's, I was going to say that, too. I, I think it's important to get in there because it's at the Hyatt Regency again this year, and I, if I recall, when we used to be there, some people couldn't get in there, and they had to be in a hotel across the street or something. So I think the sooner we can get ours in, you know, it'll assure us to be in that.
My brother's condo is right behind it, you can see there. My brother's condo is right behind it, you can.
Oh, okay, okay. Probably a little cheaper than.
Yeah.
Anyway, I, I think I'll, you can put me down for.
Yeah, you can put me down, too.
December 3rd through the 5th this day.
Thank you. All right, other than that, we're adjourned.